Yeah, okay.
Yeah, just have to, um, welcome to the special city council meeting study session on February twenty fourth. Um, and then we'll go on to our economic development strategic.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Protem and council members. Uh, the idea for you is, uh, so first of all, I want to thank you for calling this, uh, strategic economic development strategic planning session. Uh, it's, I think it's going to be a really great session, and so we're thankful, uh, for you calling in. And our vision, uh, so tonight, uh, I just wanted to go over what staff's vision is for this economic development strategic planning session. And we're really here to obtain your strategic direction, uh, in order to develop an economic development strategic plan, uh, that guides priorities, policies, programs, and services to foster the city's ongoing economic health and competitiveness. And here we have suggested methodology, and of course, council can provide direction as to whether we should pursue this suggested methodology. Uh, so basically, we are here, we're at the city council input, um, stage, uh, but staff is recommending that we, um, engage the business community, possibly obtain city staff feedback, uh, speak with their commissioners and subcommittee members, uh, talk to our residents and our workforce, uh, so that we can identify goals and strategic objectives, and maybe conduct a new market study SWOT analysis, and then eventually adopt the strategic plan. And here I have, uh, laid out, uh, just some, some suggested goals and objectives. Uh, the city of Coachella's economic development strategic plan could focus on four areas that capitalize on Coachella's strengths while addressing its challenges and opportunities. In addition, there are measurable objectives that retain the necessary flexibility to allow for response to changing economic conditions that will occur over the life of the strategic plan. Good evening, Mr. Mayor.
Evening.
And so goal one, I can wait, uh, would you guys like me to wait for the mayor to return?
Just, you just keep going, fine, you're good.
Thank you. Uh, goal one, to support small businesses, startups and entrepreneurs. Goal number two, develop and attract workers and talent. Goal number three, grow and support the city's key industries. Number four, encourage place making and engagement. And of course, these are just suggestions, um, that council can provide, uh, direction as we go through, uh, this, uh, presentation. And I thought I'd give you, um, just a little glimpse of our demographics, uh, because things have slightly changed, changed in our city over time since the last time we ever had a, uh, market study for economic development. That was actually twelve years ago in two thousand and thirteen. Our population is hovering at about forty-three thousand, two hundred and fifty-four people. Our median household income is about forty-six thousand, eighty-five dollars. Our median home price is four hundred and seventy thousand. Uh, total jobs, uh, we're at about eight thousand, eight hundred and forty-seven. Uh, we have about ten thousand, two hundred and twenty-four housing units, and we have approximately three hundred and seventy-five short-term vacation rentals. And then our T O T rate, uh, was increased from nine percent to thirteen percent. And we are now part of a tourism business improvement district or a T bid. And then we, we, according to Placer AI, we have, uh, we've seen one point five million visitors in two thousand and twenty-four.
Ella?
Yes, the city of Coachella. Unbelievable.
Well. Remember Lightserv?
Yes, Placer AI, uh, we, uh, signed up for the service and it's been really amazing, uh, we get a lot of insights. We now know where, um, people are going, like if they're shopping at our shopping centers and then where they go after, and how much money they're spending at other neighboring shopping centers, you'd be amazed to see those numbers. Uh, this SWOT analysis was conducted back in two thousand and thirteen, so I thought I would just kind of quickly go over our strengths, weaknesses, threats, and opportunities. Uh, because some of these actually still, believe it or not, apply today. And, uh, and I'll highlight where things have changed and how we have improved. Uh, so four strengths, we have farming, agri-business cluster, we have cultural diversity, a young workforce, land availability and affordability, we have an abundance of affordable housing, we have modern industrial park with development capacity, we offer a business-friendly climate with a supportive city council. Uh, we do have city-owned water and sewer utilities. We have freeway access to the Interstate ten and State Route eighty-six. Uh, we have strong regional organizations that are focused on economic and workforce development, and we have name recognition associated with the Coachella Festival. And now our weaknesses, uh, we have a lack of economic industrial diversity. We do suffer from a high unemployment rate, uh, low educational attainment, limited availability of technical training, uh, low household and per capita income levels. Uh, we're a small city with some fiscal and staffing constraints. Uh, I don't know that we still have crime or gang problems, I, I know maybe crime. Uh, and, and people have told me that we might have a negative image tied to crime and poverty, uh, and that we have, you know, obviously, lack of rail infrastructure and a disconnect with some key Coachella Valley industries like hospitality and healthcare. And I can kind of elaborate a little bit on why we have a disconnect with, um, healthcare. Uh, and I, uh, you know, many years ago, we had looked into bringing a hospital system to the city of Coachella, and some of the hospital systems that we pursued, uh, they told us, like Kaiser Permanente, for example, told us, I'm sorry, we, we can't come to the Coachella Valley until we get, um, at least two hundred and seventy-five thousand, um, uh, Kaiser members, that, that Coachella has to have two hundred and seventy-five thousand Kaiser members and then they'll come. Uh, but as you know, we have brought in, like, you know, we've had Regal Health, we now have DAP Healthcare, and other, you know, clinics that the city has brought in, uh, since this SWOT analysis was, um, produced. Uh, and then hospitality, we're still working on our hotel, and I, I'm very certain that in the near future, future, we will get one. And then our threats, uh, obviously, the dissolution of the redevelopment agencies, uh, was kind of, kind of still like a reality at the time because I think they officially dismantled the redevelopment agencies in two thousand and ten, and this was produced in two thousand and thirteen. And so that presented a little bit of a challenge for many cities across California because it restricts a city's ability to mitigate blighting of older business, business districts and to obviously pursue land assembly as an economic development tool. Uh, also, the potential mismatch between the priorities of regional organizations and the unique needs that, and opportunities that are in Coachella.
What does that even mean?
Well, that means that basically, you know, i- in Coachella, like, we have unique needs in that we probably need additional workforce training and development, we might need more manufacturing, warehousing, you know, retail, that kind of stuff.
How does that differ from regional organizations?
Well, we don't have, uh, and we don't have, uh, like, we're not, we don't have a, a bridge, right, like, we, we don't have an interchange, basically, that connects, you know, like, for example, like Landrada Master Plan Community, and so I think, you know, we're one of the few places that don't have that infrastructure, right, and so I think that presents a little bit of a challenge.
But what, what does that have to do with regional organizations, that the needs and opportunities and?
Well, because you have C VAG, C VAG is a.
C VAG wants to see the bridge.
Well, they, they fund infrastructure.
But it's not a mismatch.
Well, this is what was produced in the SWOT analysis.
So in twenty twenty, in twenty thirteen.
In twenty.
So I think, to be fair for two thousand and twenty-five, I think we're in, update this.
Yes.
Yeah, because you added one, two, three, four things in the bottom there.
Yeah.
You didn't update the whole thing, you should, because this is a public document.
Yes, definitely.
It's like, you, you know, you put crime and gang problems. This is like right out of David Garcia's, uh, SWOT analysis that he probably reproduced in thirteen, and so, what was there, it's not present today.
Well, thank you, Selena, we can give further direction as we move along, um, your.
Thank you. And then our threats, I just, uh, was reading through that, so, um, you know, we do have limited energy capacity, lack of private investment, venture capital, cost of development, and some long-term fiscal obligations that could be a challenge. However, the next slide is opportunities. And so, uh, so these are opportunities that were identified through the study and agribusiness is at the top, uh, followed by food processing and technology, uh, the arts, entertainment, recreation, and visitor industries, uh, energy, including renewable energy, manufacturing, printing and publishing, uh, transportation and logistics, wholesale trade, accommodations and food service, and then healthcare and social assistance, retail trade. And so the recommendation was that the city should leverage key forthcoming development and infrastructure investments in the city with the surrounding area, so for example, Landrada Master Plan Community, the Thermal Club Racetrack, and then rail infrastructure, which we're currently, uh, working on. And to expand linkages to key regional tourism attractions and infrastructure like the Coachella and Stagecoach festivals, our casinos, thermal airport, thermal club, agritourism, youth amateur tournaments, and then professional training facilities. And in this, uh, next slide, I'm presenting some of the recommended actions from this plan. And, uh, one of the key, uh, actions that they recommended is that we launch a comprehensive branding and marketing campaign focused on the following themes and objectives. Uh, so basically, positioning the city as a high-quality-of-life place, uh, positioning, positioning Coachella as the epicenter of agri-business, agritourism in the Coachella Valley and beyond, uh, positioning Coachella as development-friendly, that we're a development-friendly city with tremendous growth capacity and business opportunities. And then to develop general and industry-specific marketing materials, print and electronic media to support the city's development and business attraction objectives. And then here, th- these are industries that were highlighted as key industry clusters, and they're listed in the order of priority. Uh, number one, agri-business, food processing and technology, arts, entertainment, recreation, transportation and logistics, chemicals and chemical-based products, manufacturing, uh, with initial emphasis on three established manufacturing sectors in the city, defense-related, concrete products and musical instruments, uh, biomedical, biotechnical, life sciences, renewable energy, and then printing and publishing, uh, and this was kind of, um, it, it's just, uh, these last three or last two, excuse me, are, uh, recommended to pursue as opportunity.
Bill, uh, Bill, going back to that, let's go back. You've stated to us that you were opposed to chemical and chemically-based production, and this is a high priority, are you changing your mind now? Because you're basically told us that you don't want to, uh, entitle or, or expand developments and don't pay any sales tax or property tax to the city, so when we're talking about high-priority projects, this is what this is saying, high priority is chemical and chemically-based products to, you want to attract those now?
No, this, they're, she's talking about the SWOT analysis that was done back in two thousand and thirteen, she's talking about where we were versus where we're going to go now, and before you walked in, we talked about how we're going to take council through, um, looking for your priorities, and, but we wanted to refresh the council as to where we were the last time we did a SWOT analysis. I think you need to know where we were versus where we're going to go, so that we, things have changed, and absolutely, I was, I was a finance director back then when we did this originally, and you know my drive is trying to drive something that's going to provide for the city, because we have to pay for public safety. Um, and, and we'll get into that when we talk a little later, because, uh, you know, energy. Um, we had somebody come in wanting to do a battery, um, installation to be able to, um, augment what's happening with the solar industry, and at night, they would release energy back into the system. It would use almost two hundred acres out towards Avenue fifty-two. City wouldn't get anything from that, we wouldn't get a, a, you know, a, a fee maybe from franchise or even U U T from it. Why would we take some prime property and, and put something in there that's not going to, it'll generate some property tax for us, but nothing is compared to what, um, we could possibly put there in the future, so you're exactly right. We're, we're going to talk through what was talked about before versus what we're going to look at coming up.
Um, so these are not priorities, then?
No, they're, they, they.
That's what we're.
Just presenting.
Talking before.
So you're giving us an update, especially for some of us that weren't here, as to what that SWOT analysis came back with.
Yes.
And so it's good for some of us to go through. And then as we're building a new SWOT analysis, we can compare in contrast in that ten years, maybe some of the changes are needed. And I'm sure some of them will still continue to be a need, but still also, you know, make the changes to where we're at today.
Yes, definitely, we want to obtain council's direction on priorities, you know, um, and, and policy direction, so, yeah, this is definitely not intended to be prescriptive. And then here are some recommended place-making land uses, also from two thousand and thirteen, and, uh, I, I thought I would include this to, again, just provide some perspective. Uh, so number one, they listed local healthcare facilities and service providers, number two, retail entertainment development, number three, hotel development, number four, high-quality residential development, and then five, urban employment center in the area bounded by Avenue fifty, Tyler Street, Avenue fifty-two, and the railroad tracks, I think that's, uh, uh, what we're calling, um, zona centrada. And, uh, I want to call up Mr. Gabriel Perez to kind of explain these next few slides, uh, because I think it's, uh, very, very, uh, informational to kind of look at our commercial areas and also take a look at our regional commercial areas in the city, and I'll have Gabriel come up and say a few words.
Thanks, Selena. Good evening, council, so Selena asked me to prepare these maps to give you an idea of where our commercial areas in the city are, so all the areas in red or pink, uh, are areas that are either regional commercial, neighborhood commercial or general commercial, and then in purple is our resort districts in the city. Um, and then you can see the remainder of, uh, of those areas, a lot of it is areas that haven't been developed in the city. And r- really, about quarter of the city is developed at this time. And then looking at the larger regional picture, um, th- these are all the regional commercial areas in the vicinity of Coachella. So in La Quinta, you have the Highway one-eleven corridor, which is, you know, really a, a, a big regional draw in the Coachella Valley, uh, you have the regional commercial areas in the city of Indio, along Jackson Street and the ten freeway. And then we have our regional commercial areas in the city that really haven't developed yet, and those were concentrated um, at the, basically at the intersection of the eighty-six expressway and the ten freeway. Um, and also at Avenue fifty-two and Van Buren. And if you might recall, back in two thousand and six, tho- that area around Avenue fifty-two and Van Buren was actually annexed, uh, into the city at that time, so it was an area that was considered far, uh, enough away from Highway one-eleven corridor, five miles, to be able to have a regional commercial, um, portion of the city. That area hasn't developed yet, but at that time, back in two thousand and six, it was anticipated that there, there would be big box, um, users that would go in there, like Target, Home Depot, uh, but then with the downturn, that never materialized.
Well, you should also mention that the regional commercial area on eighty-six into ten is no longer within the city's land use, so that big red swath in the middle is tribal land now.
Yeah, so we wouldn't get any of the retail sales tax that would come from development of that site. So that's something for us to think about, right, do we want to replace that with regional commercial elsewhere, how do we plan around that for the future? Uh, this is a little bit different than the, the commercial I was talking about, um, so part of what we'd want to consider is how do we also plan around heritage tourism, so if you've ever driven around other historic districts in Southern California, um, like Old Town Orange, um, you see freeway signs that point to places that, uh, people want to visit. San Juan Capistrano are examples of that. They get a lot of visitors because people that are interested in visiting the historic nature of those communities. Um, and there's tours that you can, you can go on, and so that sign that, that I, I mentioned for the historic district in Orange, there's actually, uh, water that you can take, uh, around their historic district. And this was a historic district that I got to participate in, and so that's something that we could do here, because the downtown of Coachella is very historic, uh, and we just learned last week, there used to be a depot at the end of Sixth Street where General Patton, uh, actually kept, uh, medical supplies and supplies for World War Two. So a lot of history definitely in the city of Coachella.
Thank you, Gabriel. And in this next slide, uh, we're moving now into, uh, the segment of the presentation where uh, s- s- staff has identified some possibilities for council, and again, these are just suggestions, uh, not to be prescriptive. And so, uh, we thought about catalytic city project, and, and we thought the city could possibly consider a downtown catalytic city development project. For example, the Old City Hall buildings could offer a variety of development tenant opportunities that place businesses, retail, or hotel in the downtown Pueblo Viejo district. Uh, we also thought it would be really good to include a parcel-specific inventory of infill opportunities, underutilized or vacant parcels. Uh, we believe that this will assist in the development, uh, in the development community in identifying and assessing sites for potential investment. We also thought that the potential for public-private partnerships, uh, should also be identified. And so you'll see to the right that we are suggesting like a hotel, uh, to examine the disposition of the Old City Hall property as a development investment opportunity. Uh, retail attracts specialty niche, uh, retailing to the downtown, uh, to complement the existing mix. Uh, some additional dining and drinking opportunities to attract additional, uh, dining, drinking establishments which help anchor tenants.
Just, uh, for the record, I won't be participating in this portion of the conversation. I'm simply listening because it's all big, bigger conversation. So have a way.
Thank you. Um. And then we have some thoughts regarding or ideas regarding place-making. Um, the city of Coachella could welcome new dining and retail destinations by celebrating its rich cultural heritage and history at its community resilience center, or it could be in the downtown. And so the pictures that you see here are of like a butcher shop, like a very, um, uh, curated, um, butcher shop, and then we have the demonstration kitchens, uh, that I think are, the, the people that are looking to become entrepreneurs in the food industry could possibly, um, cook there and, uh, sell their food, uh, for delivery or what have you. Um, and then you see the spaces below, um, they look very barn-like, farm-like, um, down-to-earth, you know, uh, type of, um, designs, and I think our community resilience center is potentially going to kind of mirror some of these images. And so we suggested demonstration kitchens for food preparation facilities to be, to set up for the preparation of delivery-only meals, uh, food halls, uh, which are a collection of local artisan restaurants, butcher shops, and other food-oriented boutiques under one roof, uh, experiential retail, and what this means is offering a consumer more than a shopping experience, but an engagement experience. And then we have the artisan creative, uh, shared artisan space allowing for the creative process and sale of the finished product, and then the gallery space, uh, which could be like a vacant storefront creative design program whereby artisans display their work. Another place-making idea that kind of integrates our cannabis industry, uh, uh, the cannabis trail is currently, um, in Mendocino County, and so, uh, it winds through Mendocino, California, or Mendocino County, California, offering a unique ta- tapestry of local landmarks that illuminate the history, cultivation, and cultural significance of cannabis. Uh, this curated cannabis trail adventure promises an, an immersive exploration of the plant's journey from seed to consumption. And so we thought that perhaps the city could think about a cannabis trail, since we do have, uh, a cannabis industry here in the city, and this, and we would like to create, like, experiences and to kind of attract people to come, uh, to Coachella and experience, uh, cannabis. And then we have the agritourism, um, ruta de datil, and so we, of course, pardon this ugly map, but, um, uh, if Gabriel Perez ever, he, he, his vision is to obviously curate this map and make it look beautiful. Uh, but a date route, uh, basically, um, offering people experiences like you would in, um, Valle de Guadalupe in, um, Mexico, Baja California, Mexico. Uh, so we're thinking a ruta de datil, or a date route, could be, uh, a route that celebrates our cultural heritage with the dates and date products, and it could be even, you know, a date beer, a date wine, um, even date shakes and all that good stuff. Um, it would be centered around dates, and then also, um, maybe even integrating, uh, our farmers' markets or like, um, a mobile food truck program or something like that.
Correction, that there's no beer or wine allowed in the ruta de datil. The council avoided not to allow beer or wine during the presentation on the Blue Zone, so that's, that's something that, uh, the council said they want no alcohol here, they want to be like, uh, Utah.
I'm sorry.
Just making, just making sure you're factually right.
Okay. Yeah, I, I'm sorry, I forgot about that.
Is it, it's, is it something that we can bring back and modify?
Always, yes.
All right, and then next we have agricultural sustainability. And what we mean by this is, um, to identify individual industries, so, so basically, our, our previous study had identified uh, agritourism as a big, a big thing that the city could pursue, and so, um, so this, this example here, it, you know, farming or crop production is the engine that makes an agricultural economy possible. And so we were thinking, uh, along the lines of farm-to-table opportunities, like a farmer's market, the healthy food truck program, and even, um, like an agricultural summit where all of this converges and comes together on an annual basis, and so we thought we would highlight that idea. And then the next idea, workforce training and development, as you all know, through the T C C and C R C grant funding programs, uh, funded by the Strategic Growth Council, we, we are going to be featuring extensive workforce training and development opportunities for our residents. And through these programs, our residents are going to be able to scale up rather quickly in, in decent paying jobs. So for example, we will have like electricians and H V A C technicians through C E T, uh, solar photovoltaic installers, and even zero-emission vehicle rideshare drivers, and, uh, our urban youth conservation corps who, who help, um, with events like Arbor Day, but also, um, during fires. Uh, they actually play a pivotal role in clearing brush and assisting, uh, during those, uh, trying times. And so all of these are workforce training and development opportunities that are going to be implemented very, very soon here. And then we have small business incubation opportunities, uh, at the community resilience center, uh, excuse me. And so here we have a picture of some chefs, uh, so some people can actually learn, uh, more about how to process food at the C R C through a small business incubation program that focuses on, uh, food entrepreneurship. And we could have, again, back, going back, tying it back to the healthy food truck program and demonstration kitchens, and then maybe a farmer's market where it culminates in, in, you know, um, produce that is brought in by local, uh, farms, uh, and is sold there or used there, there's a restaurant. And then we thought we could bring in the Chukwala National Monument, uh, as an access, uh, as promoting access to outdoor recreation. Uh, the city could possibly link up, uh, provide its first trail linking to the Chukwala National Monument. And here are some pictures where our city engineer and development services director, they went on a hike uh, and took these beautiful pictures of Chukwala, and they wanted to showcase them so that people could be inspired and think about creating that connection. And then, uh, we wanted to bring up, uh, quality of life, uh, so the city was thinking, uh, you know, one way that we do this is through parks or amenities. And so this is the Ninth Street Park or the Ninth Street little diamond-shaped, uh, property that it could be envisioned looking like this, uh. And so, so that's, that's amazing, because that space right now is empty. And here's a re- a rendering of, uh, Rancho Las Flores Park, uh, the expansion of Rancho Las Flores Park. And then our wellness hub, so the current Bagduma Community Center, uh, is looking to receive a little update through the funding received through T C C, and so basically, we want to transform the space so that uh, it can accommodate, um, you know, a, a myriad of classes like yoga, Pilates, ballet, strength training, et cetera, and replace the lighting, repaint the interior walls, uh, install a welcome desk and a demonstration kitchen to offer nutritious food preparation classes, and then, uh, add an outdoor botanical garden. And then, uh, again, this is coming from our city council, uh, to catalyze housing development. Um, we heard that, uh, you know, our community would like, um, homes that are affordable and that are smaller footprint, uh, so like condominiums or townhomes, uh, additional single-family homes, and then additional multifamily homes. Arts and tourism, the arts play a very pivotal role in economic development, if you think about even just New Orleans and how they have that district. Um, that, that is, um, an, an amazing experience. You have, um, in New York, there's places in New York like Central Park and, and, and Manhattan and what have you, and so like, you can. You have in New York, there's places in New York like Central Park and, and Manhattan and what have you. And so like you can create some artistic. Districts to kind of draw people in and you can have theater, you know, art exhibits, sculptures, film. Performances, gardens, other attractions and even health and wellness. As we've seen with the Just Move Coachella movement, people have been integrating, you know, health and wellness. The library as a community hub. You know, even the state has called, they, they produced a report and they talk about the importance of our libraries as. Community hubs where people gather for learning, learning experiences, but also to communicate and, and you know, enhance their. Their, their lives, you know, through intellectual opportunities there. So as you know, we are working on that at the annex. So anyway, so this is the library as a community hub. Broadband capacity, as the council knows, staff is working closely with HR Green in developing a broadband master plan. And this report will assist our leadership in understanding the operational implications. Important risk factors and, and give us a really good realistic cost. Framework for developing and operating city-owned fiber optic infrastructure. And then I wanted to bring this to your attention and direction. So as you might know. The county of Riverside is currently conducting a survey asking cities to nominate two projects that could be included in the comprehensive. Economic Development Strategy Plan, or what we call the SEDS. And so the importance of featuring city projects in this plan is that. Should funding become available through the Economic Development Agency at the federal level, even state level? If your projects are named in the SEDS, you have a very good chance of getting funded. And so I just wanted to show the council what two projects were submitted last year and to also provide staff with direction. As to what projects would you like to feature in the upcoming SEDS. I can cut that. Passenger rail. As you all know, we've been very engaged in this Coachella Valley Sangoriono Pass rail corridor. Service study. And so we are actively participating in these meetings. I think we have an upcoming community engagement opportunity. Coming up and to again further obtain feedback from the community about this passenger rail service. And this concludes the presentation. I'd like to give the council an opportunity to provide feedback, direction, comments, ideas. So thank you.
Hi, council.
Thank you, Selena. I think you did a really, really good job. It was very well thought out. You know, we really needed, I think, a fuller picture or. You know, framework or path to economic development. It's something that we need in the city of Coachella. And it's not that we're not building and it's not that we're not growing. At the economic capacity, but rather just having goals that we want to reach and obtain. I really do like. A more structured plan and to have a framework from where we work within. It makes me uncomfortable when we don't, but that probably the education part of me too is that I like. Goals and something that we can achieve and then also have community input. I was unaware of this SWAT analysis that was done in 2013. So it does provide a lot of feedback. Of what was done at that time and what things. What key elements were identified at that time and what was needed. And obviously the mayor has identified some things that obviously may not connect to where we're at today, but. It's still a good insight to know where we were at 10 years ago. And so just so that I'm understanding, is it, will we move forward to create a new SWAT analysis? Is that?
If council would like, yes, because that would require that we release an RFP and solicit, you know, the assistance of, of a professional firm to provide the SWAT analysis.
And then explain to me the steps, Selena, if we were to do a SWAT analysis and we put that RFP out. What would be the process?
So the process would be that we would obviously develop like an RFP so that we can publish that and advertise that. And we can advertise it for at least 30 to 60 days is my recommendation so that we get some really good feedback or good, good. Folk that are interested in helping us. And then after that, you know, we would then work closely with this consulting firm and, and help us kind of like. Conduct all the engagement that we need to do so that we're properly and impartially collecting the information from the community. Because sometimes I, I do think that people might feel just, you know, like they're not able to be themselves if we're the ones conducting it. But again, you know, this is all up to the council. So I do think that there's a lot of value to getting a SWAT analysis conducted by a firm that can. Really just dig in.
We did that one.
I'm sorry?
We did the last one.
It was neat. They're called the. They were called the, the Nadelson Dale Group.
It was when Mark Webber was with us.
Whoever did it. And then it was at a, I mean, the. Planning, part of the planning session was actually where the, the strategic planning session like this. Just actually go through and break down several things. I mean, if you go back to. The different strength weaknesses, threats. Some of them don't apply. I think what was relevant then in terms of where we were at with the region, like. It was a different relationship than what we got now. So that one is not accurate, I think. I think the, when we talk about our utilities as a strength. I think they are a strength, but they're also under threat. You know, with respect to increasing costs, the fact that the general fund. Basically takes a lot of dollars from them, you know, and, and you have a lot of growth that's occurring. And at the same time, probably a lot of debt that we're going to need to incur. So that's a threat, right? I mean. Go back. I think, I'm not sure what they mean. I think at the time where they were saying rail infrastructure. There was this idea that we wanted to do rail spurs in this area and, and those rail spurs. They, they never materialized simply because Union Pacific didn't want to offer any. Rail spurs and it's been tied up in the greater conversation with respect to. Partening lines and Union Pacific wanting to do double lines so that any rail spurs, like they're not going to happen. So there's a lot of different things like the gang, the crime and gang problem that was all leading up to the gang injunction that we did here. That happened. This is 12 years old, not 10 years old. This is, you know, 2013 and probably got started in 2011. So now you're looking at a document that's more like. 15 years old when it probably initiated. So yeah, there's just a lot of different things that, that, that need updating. And that are, some can be, there are more weaknesses and strengths where others that are no longer weaknesses. You know, if you look at low household and per capita, like well, according to our own demographic information. We have high household and high household income and low per capita. You know, individual, right? I mean, that's, that's what's kind of scoring us wrong. Each house has a medium, a median income of 50, 60,000 now. Cause there's three or four or five, 10 people living in the house. And you know, that's right. Like, I mean, am I wrong in that or?
No.
Right? Right. And but the individual income is the issue. And so again, just going through this, it's, it's a lot of, of. Needs a lot of updating, you know, a lot. I'm not, I'm not opposed to doing these things. It just takes a lot of time. You know, and there's still things like farming, culture diversity, young workforce, land availability, affordable housing. Is that still relevant? Do we still have affordable housing? Nope. We don't. I mean. That's, so those are all like. Just things that we'll pay attention and have to really go through. Small city staff with fiscal, with fiscal staffing weakness. According to Bill last week, I saw you said, we have more staff. And so that's no longer relevant, right? You'd probably put that as a strength now. So it's a larger staff. With, 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 with maybe, I don't know, I don't think it's fiscal constraints because we're not in a deficit. But it's a larger staff and where you're not structurally deficit as well. That's, so that's no longer relevant. So yeah, and then the redevelopment agencies, well, they've been, they've been gone for a long time, but we know in 2031. The switch is going to happen, which is six years and in government time, six years is pretty fast. So all the bond proceeds.
Twenty thirty-six is the last time. It's, it's.
Period.
Yeah, and some of it, some of it, the fees is.
Some of them get paid early, some of them get paid later. You know what I mean? So, but I think 3031, you're going to start seeing like that bond proceed pay off and then.
There'll be some property tax.
Property tax. So that's a potential, you know, opportunity. SWAT, SWAT is strength, weakness, threats and opportunity. We're missing the opportunity there. So that, that's, so that definitely needs.
Opportunity is the next slide.
You know, La Entrada Master Plan, like, like the La Entrada Master Plan, it's still relevant. I mean, it's probably coming to us. But the big, the big issue there is that we haven't been able to fund the bridge, you know, and. It's been a big issue. Thermal race track. The county's all over that. So that's no longer. You know, it should be more like the thermal airport and what we can do to continue our sphere. We're, we're, we're under threat, but I also saw. Last week where there was mention of consultants that we use to help us get P7 and. That was made to be a big old thing like this, like almost like we don't want to do that anymore. Or like, you know, so I'm like, wait, I thought we were all in agreement that we wanted to continue to annex. So are we going to annex? Are we not going to annex? I don't know. But anyways, so those things need to be cleared up. And then rail infrastructure, we all agree, but I think it looks more like, it looks more likely to RCTC. Where. There's no ballot initiative in terms of going out for a sale, a quarter sales tax to, or whatever it is, to actually fund. You know, the passenger rail here. I think, I think that could be an opportunity. I mean, we got to support that. And then I look at some of these other. Energy, including renewable, like, do we really want to do 500 acres or 1,000 acres of, of wholesale energy production and? No, no. I mean, that's like, that was the idea way back in the day. Printing and then, you know. It's some of, I don't know where that other one was where, where, what I'm hearing from Bill, like on the. On some of the chemical and anything that doesn't do tax generation, we ain't trying to go after it, right? Like that's not. That's not the idea.
We have to keep in mind, based upon where we are today, we have to maximize our dollars coming into the city by land use.
Yeah.
And you know, the tribe annexed a huge swath of our entertainment zone. However, we met with the tribe and I believe that there's a partnership opportunity there available to us and they want to. Plan with us the interface between the city and the tribal area. It was a great conversation with our ex-assemblium and I, I think there's going to be real food that comes from that.
Yeah, I mean, eventually.
Yes.
Eventually, but in the meantime, like what is our economic development strategy? And, and so when we look at. Our, go back to the map with Gabe put. With the little red regional commercial, like where should we grow? Like go back. So yeah, so that one's perfect. So Indio, for example, Indio is like gangbusters right now. They're. I mean, they're kind of, they're going to get a Chick-fil-A. I'm kind of jealous. Anyways, so go back to the other map. And then when you link these things to like ICSC, what do they tell us? What's your one, three, five mile radius? And so you look at your one, three, five mile radius, like. And then this doesn't even include like what Indio did over there on. What did they do? Like on 50th and they got the Ralph Shopping Center over there? Like it's all.
Jefferson.
Yeah, that should be like a red little cell, right? So, so now where does Coachella grow? I mean, originally we wanted to grow up there to the I-10 and the, and the 86. May not want to do that anymore. Maybe, I don't know.
We're going to have to grow our way out of it.
Yeah, well, there.
Well, exactly. It's going to be in the ag areas where it's going to be.
Probably the Fissive Corridor.
Yes, yes. South and also in the La Entrada KPC planned areas, north of the 10 and south of the 10. West, east of the 86.
Well, we could probably do in that whole area during the 48 and 86 is probably make big swaths of industrial land out there.
Because of access on the 86, but then again. Generation of, of revenues for the general fund is going to be tough unless we enter into development agreements where, you know, they. And even at that, it's only when they're building that we get sales tax capture after the fact, rate job generation base. However, after the fact, if we have our utility forever. Electric, then yes, things change because we're generating franchise and we're generating more UUT.
No.
And, and our, our residents are going to work and hopefully they're, they're better paid.
I guess, I guess the point is that our original idea of, of supporting like a lot of specific plans along that. Forty-eight Dillon Corridor was because we also had probably like 1.8 million square feet of residential plan or retail.
Right.
So if that incentive is gone because we don't control the land use. So then, so then should we say, hey, no, you know what? Maybe a better use is, is do large-scale commercial. And make that as part of the, the, the goods corridor strategy. And so instead of putting a bunch of specific plans and homes and all that in that area. And that just becomes, we reworked that area and we said, we're going to put 1 million square foot distribution facilities. Because of access to the freeway and then we shift our housing development off the 50th corridor up and down that area. So then at that point, like we can try to figure out how we maximize retail generation.
Right. We have, we have to rethink our general plan based upon things that have just currently happened that have come to our attention. And the sooner we act upon that, the better because we do not want. Maps coming in that all of a sudden use our current planning and tie up land for a period of time. We have to prepare for this.
Gabriel, there's like a, there's a whole different. To call the land use and finance, like there's like this link, I know John Payne just used a word of like. It was like the, like the, the like, like looking at it from a financial development and. And ultimately it comes down to sustainability, guys, like, like this is already a high-tax city in a lot of different ways, right? You got a UUT tax, you have a, a sales tax, you got now another, you got CFDs, you know what I mean? Like. So now it's like, okay, where you can't really go back and tax the residents. We went and we taxed the visitors, which is fine. But like, how do we, how do we, where, where do we create now? Retail. 1 million square feet.
It's, it's going to have to be east of the 86 and think of old city, new city. And we put it in the middle. It feeds into itself instead of going north into India or west into La Quinta.
I, I don't, I, I think, I think we go after this. I think we, we really move on, on annexation strategies. Like we try to get down the 52 corridor. We, we, we have so many community identifiers from, I went to school at Coia Desert Academy, I think. You know, I don't know. Did you go to school there? I think Denise, you went to Bobby Duke. Like our cemetery is right there too. Our water and sewer infrastructure are right there. In that corridor, you have. Within a mile of our border, you have million dollar, actually they're like 30, 40, 50 million dollar properties. And you have a community that's willing to come into Coachella either through P7. You know, you know, the, the Polo Grounds that want to do development agreements. A lot of folks out there, they're saying, hey, and then the Quinta is starting to see some issues. With respect to their land use and what the community out there is saying. It's, it's pretty documented. It was just. Recently a former council member's development or market, Pennities, Governor Ramirez's old place. Right? And they went up there to, and another group bought it, but they were, they were there to, to do a big improvement to it. And West Side is there. And then we have, we have a sewer line that goes into West Side. Right? And so we, we, we went in that area and, or the, they went in front of the community council seat. La Quinta showed up and residents there say, we don't want that development. We don't want those people playing that music. What music are they talking about? You know, the one that goes dun, dun. The big, big, big trumpets, accordion, tuba. They like it. You know, and, and so you have a residence that are. You know, and and so you have a residence that are saying, hey, we wanna develop. And so you have a high school, you have an island. But that's our, that's our, that's our actual city line right there, right? Like, the high school is actually part of the city proper. So we we can start making developments. It's like, hey, we wanna close that island. And I just think from like, okay, where are we growing? And where strategically we can try to diversify our retail. And try to build a curricular mass to get us more retail where we don't have a lot of threat. Now, having said that, you got. You know, Augustine's pretty aggressive now, too. They're buying up the whole neighborhood. So that's another factor we have to think about. We have, we have, you know, we have our Native American governments, partners. That they're getting aggressive and buying up land. You know, and so what does that interface look like from Augustine to twenty nine? To Cabzon, to where we're thinking we can actually grow and and sustain services.
So you think that we can identify maybe three options within the city boundaries? And then consider obviously possible annexation, but then that's still years down the road as as well. And so, I mean, I think staff can come up with a few options of where we can um put that commercial that we lost. Out in Dillon, um, but I think it takes a lot more planning um to do. To identify.
I I was sharing with a couple of council members, I I worked in Temecula and streets of gold, you know. We didn't have an economic development department per se because people were beating down our doors because we're along the fifteen corridor. And poor Marietta was just sitting there, nothing they could do. And Temecula got everything. And I feel like. Coachella is kinda like Marietta right now because right now India is getting a lot. Marietta though planned, they they knew where they wanted commercial, they knew where they were gonna put their housing and they needed to grow. And they continued to grow and now their population is actually greater than Temecula. And Temecula is kind of built out. There's no other place for things to go. And I know that's. That that's just the reality of it. That's what happened. And I see that kind of happening here. India is gonna be out of land before we are. And we have the opportunity to fill in those places that they can't because we have land. Nobody else in the valley is gonna have land. We're gonna be, you know, the last stop, but the first stop because. People aren't gonna be able to go into those spots anymore because there's no space for them. But we need to plan for that. With our utilities, with our electric, with our general plan, with our partnerships with the tribes. Um, but that needs to start now. We gotta get ready for it because our day, our day will come. It may not be in the next five years, may not even be ten years. But the day will come and we have to be ready for it.
And then Bill, and this is maybe more of a Gabriel question. But where are the economic development pressures? I think they're on fifty two corridor and fifty. And they're going from Jackson right on down to uh probably Frederick. You know, you got a lot of uh land that's been trading right there in Saline. That's where the big economic development.
We have Shanti, Shanti with a lot of property on Fifty and Van Buren, and that's, that's a great spot.
Correct.
Meeting with him soon.
You have, you have them there and then on down Van Buren, where do you have, where are the houses going down Van Buren right now?
Yeah, we're Pyramid Ranch.
Pyramid Ranch. And then you have the, you have around the school, right? There's a gentleman that wants to do a little. Little track map in that area, I'm sure he's like metal. In con, I forget the name of it. And then you have, you know, Anthony Bianco's place over there and uh. Chuchan, that, you know, the land is trading and selling and you got other people in that area. So, so when you look at like. That little red area right there. It's preserving that little red area and then growing it around it. And then, I actually think if you look at our city center. Where we're physically are at the population right now. It's all on this east side. It's not on the north side or west side, I guess, west side. Not yet, you know, I think there we, I think the, I think the council in twenty one and twenty two, twenty three, no. In two thousand zero one and two, three, four, they thought it was gonna go there. And so they put a lot of infrastructure out in that area and then they were actually built. So it's just. Like, where should we go in the next five years?
Um, for the um SWAT analysis, um. The stakeholders that we reach out to, obviously, our businesses, uh developers, residents, um. So there are a lot of people that we connect with who identify what their needs are and um. Where they see us going with they see, because what. Our residents see versus where, you know, some of our developers or some of our businesses. Uh, might differ from one another. And so I do think that um. We need to reach out to her. What's the lifespan on a SWAT analysis? Like, what is it? Maybe every ten years or?
It's all fine, every five years.
It should be updated. In fact, it should kinda go hand in hand with the strategic plan. We should be doing strategic planning and economic development strategic planning as well because they kinda go hand in hand. If you had to list right now, the top of my head are most important things going on right now. Energy, chrome six, housing. You want to do not three big ones right out of there and then land use will follow. Um. As like I said, with the ability to control our utilities, we control our path and we've said that forever.
But by the way, on that conversation, right, like. So the county, La Quinta, Indio, they're moving on forward on the J P A. And there they all keep saying, alright, what's Coachella gonna do? I said, well, there, we we put on R F P. Uh, those R F Ps have come in, you guys are doing the review with B B K, like.
It closes, it closes on the fifth of um March.
Okay, so then.
Very soon.
So then, then I, then we'll have. Cause if the council looked at this and saying, hey, we think we can do this, we have our own water, we have our own sewer, we have our own trash. You know, now we can have our own electricity potentially, if this makes sense, whatever model you, you know, Bill, you're pretty good at looking at financial models, like. Not a bad thing. But that's something that I think is gonna be able to. Drive also this economics development strategy. And 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 beat people to the punch. Because we'll be able to move at our own rate. Or at our own speed, right? Like, so all things being equal, you know, I mean, that's all. So I I think that's important that we factor that into this conversation as well in terms of economic development strategy.
So this takes about what, two years in to to create? If that's what the mayor is saying, then back in. It started like in two thousand and eleven and then it was completed in two thousand thirteen.
They can go as fast or as slow as you want it to, but in my mind, once you. Set pace with a city manager that's gonna be in the seat. Then you put together strategic planning at that point because you, you know, depending upon here or not. You don't wanna get halfway through a process and then have the seat change. So you wanna stay the course. You, you're gonna need a couple of years because you're also going to have to analyze it over time. Put it in place, have reports coming back to you, which it will happen because we have to. Energy, we're gonna know within six months the correction we're going. Chrome six, we know that by October twenty twenty seven, we have to have a plan in place. Those things will fall in place naturally, but also also guide us though as to where we need to go. We also need to be working with the the tribal governments to, you know, uh. Sooner rather than later, Spotlight twenty nine is gonna be putting up a hotel. Um, they're gonna need fire protection. Um, we'll need to meet with them immediately because it's gonna put a strain on our general fund and. The the tribe has has graciously reached out to us. They don't have to work with us. They don't have to, but they reached out to us. I I feel that there will be a strong partner working with our our former mayor and assemblymen. Um, I I feel very good about that relationship with just one meeting. Um, they understand the impact that's going to have on us, especially that land that they just annexed in, um, they put into trust. Um, it's redevelopment, immediately it's gonna impact us because there's no property tax collected on that property. So the rest of the city is going to have to supplement that. It means less money coming into the general fund immediately, just. Whether they develop on it or not, it immediately has an impact to the general fund. And we know that the the fueling um. Shelly's is is impacting us. Um, I'll have a mid-year report coming to you at the first meeting in in March. Um, right now, I can tell you that revenues are are a little off of what they were predicted to be, a little lower, not bad. We're alright. Um, typically, when you look at revenues. A year ago, we brought in almost thirty eight million dollars in revenue. This year, we're on a par, thirty eight million dollars in revenue. It sounds great, but it's not because every year we've grown three or four percent and right now it's leveled. Which is not good because we've spent, you know, with another twelve employees and police and and. Public safety fire going up and adding fire individuals. I know that will come back to us when we put the budget together.
Now we put a million dollars aside to buy more fire man, fire station.
Well, we we can have that discussion too because. Council, council committed funds, but they weren't spent, so they can be uncommitted.
So they weren't lost?
Never said they were lost.
Vanished.
They vanished.
Yeah, vanished. Well, but to clarify it, they're no longer.
Cash now, they're committed.
No, no, so they went from, they went from unappropriated reserves.
I went somewhere I shouldn't have. Come together though for the mid-year report. This year things are fine, but I'm not seeing the growth that we've experienced before in the past. And so things are going to tighten up quickly. Um, and so we need those relationships with our tribal partners and they realize that. Um, the the assemblymen sitting in the seat as you have understands local government finance, thankfully. So um, he he will, he will have an ear both ways and and I'm sure that the result will be fair. Um, they. They realize the impact that they're going to have upon the city based upon basically taking up our entertainment corridor.
So Bill, when when we're looking at that entertainment corridor, I know they went up to. A little bit before um the can of. Cano business, I forgot.
Cana club.
Cana club. So once we get to these side del sur, if you keep going, that's still commercial. And I think that's still, so where I'm at, all that area there, I wanna say is commercial. And I wanna say there's tentative maps for hotels there. There was three. There was three. So we still have that area left, which is off of the the ten.
They're just going to be able to build it quicker because they don't have the. The environmental piece of it that they have to deal with, that the city has to.
But they're also purchasing. You know, they keep purchasing more and more because once we go to Avenue forty four, they're still, you know, looking. At that area as well, which is, I know um Spotlight twenty nine, it's across the street, but then we have Fantasy Springs. And I know that they were looking.
There was an old development that was there that was going to be like a timeshare. Generate T O T for us. And yeah, I understand that that's being examined as well.
Yeah.
And and we just have to be aware of it when cooperation is going to be critical. Um. We have to have a plan in place to to anticipate this and. Like the mayor said, electricity may guide our way because in another year and a half or so, there's not gonna be any available to anybody. So the one who has the electricity first is going to take the lead.
Yeah, and that's when I go back to the mayor's comment about, you know, if you. The electricity is the key like to unlock that that capacity, right? Because then you can. You know, potentially work with developers to say. We can, there's so much that it costs to build this and this, and you have the electricity and it's not the. Build it, but we're not, you're not gonna own it, right? Like, that's the. That's, you know, the power is the important piece, right?
We, and we have other financing capabilities that right now I I D does not have. They haven't been able to issue a bond here since two thousand and three. Whereas if we have our utility, we can also work with whoever our P three partner is and issue tax exempt bonds in terms of a lower rate, which. Rates, you know, competitive rate, and we look at real working to charge. I'm happy and sad that I I D finally realized part of what they need to do a long time ago is that they need to raise the rates. And that's just the beginning.
Yeah.
It's going to continue to do that, you know, if somebody's electric bill during the summer was four hundred dollars to keep the power on. It's gonna be eight hundred dollars in a couple of years. It's a lot of money for electric. But we have the ability to form C F D districts where if we have development coming in, we can form a district to pay for electric. Where we can finance it and it gets put on the assessment rolls. And they can pay for it over thirty years instead of somebody coming out of pocket twenty five million dollars to thirty five million dollars right now to. Get a project to even off the ground, whether they need all that power or not. Having that ability as a city is going to be critical for us. Um. It, it's going to create a competitive advantage for us.
That we put out is um, is that closer?
I'm sorry.
The R F P that we put out for the public private partnership for energy.
I think, I think the other side, though, when you look at the financial models, there is a bit of a. Developers obligation that they need to pay because they would, I I D which or H S N. They would charge them with development impact fees and so let's not give them. All of the C I, C I, C F D model, we could say, hey, look, we're gonna develop a a. A uh. A development impact fee, you can pay that and then the rest you can finance. So we'd like to see, that way it's not all burdened on the rate payer. Right? Like, share that some of the costs.
But there's going to be excess capacity when we build something, so they'll get a credit against us and. Property that is not developed will still be paying their share. The developer, the one person that came in after, you know, after the fact. Will split up and subdivide and then they will ultimately pay them, but they'll still be paying and ultimately reduces and defeats some of the debt so that. Burden to the individual taxpayer will be less. We can pay down bonds. We can set aside, you know, monies that are collected. For development impact fees and pay down bonds. And that's kinda what should be going on.
That's, that's, so that's the thing is that some of that should be going on. For us, right? Because let's also remember that we have a a fire C F D. You know what I mean?
We can only go to two percent on our property tax. So we're gonna run up against things. If we have like five C F Ds and the one percent. One point two percent that's collected by the city and school district and everybody else, we're gonna run out of capacity. And also, we're already. Like you've mentioned, we we have a lot of tax in the city. It's just creating an additional burden where things become.
So that, so those are the things we have to really think through and say, alright, like, developer. We can subsidize, but you're gonna put up more, whatever. So it's just that balance. And I think, you know, let's see Mr. Estrado there. I I. I wanna con- continue, we're gonna go down electric, crowd, water and sewer is just as important. Because one of the things that I do know is that there's a lot of threats. You know, the 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 chrome six cost is substantial, not only from the upfront investment, but then. The long-term operational, you know, need. And one of the things that we still have. Is a lot of debt on water and sewer. And so we need to know like one of those things is gonna get paid and then probably push to pay them. So that the burden on the rate payer, the taxpayer at the end of the day. Is not astronomical where they're like, what the hell? They're they're gonna come in here and they're gonna. I've seen it when they have been in pitchforks here and. I know Frankie's leading the charge on the chrome six to go get us money. And so he's gonna have a big burden and bring home a hundred million dollars because that's. That's the, that's the amount that's needed to build a chrome six. Um, you know, and and but even the long-term liability is huge. So that's, that's what I'm saying is that if we wanna keep the strength of our utility, like, how do we push that debt? And then maybe we wanna try to get into a conversation of putting, I I know right now the general fund enjoys like pushing cost on to the utility. But what's the maybe council policy that we say, alright, we're only gonna do it fifteen percent as opposed to twenty three, twenty four? I don't know what the rate is now. But you wanna.
We just finished a study to justify charges, but the council can set whatever rates for transfers between. Because we do provide administration and C V W D is its own government.
Yeah.
Our water utility and sewer utility are not, and they share services and they need to pay their fair share of them.
Uh, no, and that's, that's a fair point, but it's also like, how much has it grown? Because we, 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 because we as a general fund, we, we. Push it, right? And and so I'm just saying, how do we continue to stay competitive there when we're thinking about economic development? Because. That's important, like, and and then the rate here at the end of the day because. Like, we haven't built up reserves or depreciation accounts where we have, we have dollars where we could, oh, yeah, we don't need to go bond. Everything we've done is going out and bonding, you know what I mean? And that's a debt, I mean, our strategy has been go out and bond as opposed to building up.
And we're doing a rate study right now. We just had those discussions with the the group that are putting together the study for us.
So I mean, that's the point. Is the rate study gonna say? Do we get to where we can bond or do we get to, we we can build depreciation account dollars and put a reserve?
We're gonna have to borrow the next time we go in.
So hot, so then, so now you're, now you're looking at that, 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 that. So, so.
But we, again, we grow our way out of it because some of the infrastructure that we put in that we're still being dead on is stranded assets.
Yeah. And so, so part of that grow your way out of it, like, okay, now the tribe just bought that whole swath of land that we thought we were gonna grow into. Previous councils, right? So it's like, okay, how do we develop a strategy where maybe we start paying off some?
Yeah.
And that way we can not burden the taxpayer at all, like, on all the. And that way we can not burden the taxpayer at all, like on all the bond obligation. So just something to think about, like if there's capacity to pay, let's figure out how we pay, particularly at the general funds going. You know, like, like, that's not, that's not allocate more dollars. So that's my only thinking, like, how do we sustain this long term? All the others, Selena, like in terms of, you know, the the, you know, agriculture, tourism. I think an easy one, like act tourism makes a lot of sense for Coachella, because we still have ag and we still haven't, that's huge. And I know council member of Indians leading an effort to try to do a summit. But there's something that's so simple that we've never done and India does a really good job at doing it. Like if you go across the street right there at the State of Brothers, they have that little red barn and they have an open field. And they have, you know, every single tomato, orange, whatever, and they have a little strawberry patch. And then people just show up and it's part of a little, we can do that on fifty-two, you know? I mean, we can do that in some little areas where we're encouraging people, you go down into like a what's the garlic city? Gilroy and all that, all up in Gilroy, they have a bunch of little honey and and I go pick lavender. I love lavender, like little lavender patches and all that, like that's part of like, if we wanna see and then and then supporting farm to table, right? But we can't, like, we can't support, we can say, oh, we can't say we wanna see that, but then I give them alcohol. That was so strange that the council voted to not to take away the alcohol from the green zones. Because I mean, adults like to have a blue zones, green zone, blue zones. Adults like to have a a libation. You know, I don't know of any adult that that's like, it's like, this isn't, you know, it's like so weird, like you're like, like that's linking, like connecting the dots here.
Because they can have special events regardless of having, doing the blue zone. And so that was the conversation that they don't have to do the blue zone or what we are not, because what we had was just a truck, it was a truck. And it did not include anything else.
Coming up here for every special event, if you're a vendor, like you know, to come produce special event, get approval from the city council, from the planning commission. It's like let them do it by right.
Well, it can't just be by right, because the plant, the truck, um, the blue zone has to meet certain requirements as well. So it's not that they can just go and be a vendor, they have to meet the requirements as well, which is a lot.
But I thought the staff recommendation was to allow them to go ahead and do it by right. So that so that it could be part of the blue zones and they wouldn't have to like once taken care of that, Gabriel.
No, I think it hadn't meet the twenty-five percent.
Yeah, the healthy twenty-five percent free menu, but um I thought I thought wine was a lot, but I maybe I
Yeah, so a C U P would let them do it by right. They could do it all the time, not through a special permit. That was what the council said, no, you wanna come here and do it by special permit. That makes no sense, I wouldn't wanna do that, you know?
But that would just be for the for the truck vendors. So if they want anything else outside the truck vendors, they still gotta come back for the C U P, they still gotta come back for all that stuff, right? So again, this, that was just for the the truck vendors, that is, that is it. So outside of the truck vendors, it would be like, okay, so let's say, you know, one of the ranches out there does, you know, invites vendors, okay, trucks, all right. But that only, that's only for the truck vendors, they're not just gonna have truck vendors. They're also gonna have other events going on at that same time, they need to do special events.
I thought the idea, Gabriel, when you're promoting promoting this ruta de vino or ruta de lati. No, but it's the ruta de de lati, I thought you wanted to create these little farms that had the ability to uh sell things, have a little beer garden, have a little wine. And then you do a special event where you bring in the little trucks, but the alcohol license belongs to the farm owner. I thought that's the idea, is that the idea gave or that the alcohol license belonged to the to the to the, the alcohol license cable company. The alcohol license would belong to the, to the, the food truck? I don't even think the state of California allows that type of license.
So the the C P would run with the lands.
With the land.
Be able to pack it, right? Uh, so with the way that we were contemplating it is with the food truck is kind of like the catalyst for the long-term or use in the future, right? So they could see if this works and if they created that, right? Uh, so, uh, uh, you know, if a business uh, or a farmer could establish a long-term use in the future and still do use C U Ps, right? Just right now, food truck, you can't have the C U P with it right now, because
Floating.
Uh, but you could always change that, right? So I just wanna mention that, the long term, you could apply for the C U P. But you have the long, the long term.
So so the plan was always that the that the land would have the C U P and the alcohol license, wasn't the food truck. Food truck cannot have an alcohol license because the state of California doesn't issue a food truck and alcohol license. So that was misunderstood somewhere on the council's end. So so if we wanna see these, this ruta de lati and create these venues, including a city owned one, because I know Gabriel, you're talking about maybe going out there and preserving some of this land and cre- and creating like a, like what they did in Riverside where they created like a citrus grove. And they created that the city owns and then they sell alcohol, something runs it, like, those are things, like if we wanna see these things, the alcohol license be gotten belongs with the man.
Yeah, so it wasn't a council mistake, it's the way we understood it was that the vendor would hold it. And you know, I don't wanna go into this long conversation on there's something, I mean, it's, it's something that we can easily bring back, we really can. Um, there's a lot of studies that obviously we're looking at the rate study, we just, did we get done with that broadband study?
No, not yet, we're uh probably about four months, maybe, about four months.
So we also have a lot of studies that we have going on, they're gonna help quite a bit in how we, you know, do this economic development plan, as you're saying. Um, Bill, to start planning and, you know, what we're gonna be doing in the next few years along, once we get the, um, once we close the deadline for the R F P as well for the public-private partnership and energy. Um, and then obviously those are gonna be lengthy conversations as well as, you know, what's gonna be the best option for for the city? And um, like the mayor said, you know, there is um the J P A's that are, that are happening and you know, I I D and as well as um C B A are reaching out to have some of these uh continued conversation, there isn't anything wrong with having those continued conversations. Um, there's obviously more stuff here we're looking at that you brought up, not just the ag. Um, uh, Selena, but the arts, the entertainment, the transportation. You know, there's a lot that we're looking at here that really brings um in where we paying some of that you know, debt, all this stuff brings people in and people wanna spend when they're having a a good time in the downtown or wherever else we identify what we wanna put that entertainment zone or those commercial zones um that we lost. Once um so what's council's involvement? Um, you know, if we put the R F P for for the SWAT analysis, what is council's um input or or how do we, do we, are we continuously then um being told uh as where the stakeholders or what their input is, is how involved are we in?
We we would, we would meet as a group is what we would do after we had the community input. And then staff would identify things that the community are looking for and also what we feel is important. Uh, we had a great meeting today with, um, his name is Jerry, he's done a couple of um packing houses, uh, one in Riverside, one in Claremont, and he just opened up one in in Redlands and um, it's pretty awesome to see what he's done and he's a person that we partnered with with the C R C to um to create that space there. And I've shared with a couple of council members some thoughts that I had because uh actually the mayor had brought it up to me as well that we don't have a a space for individuals to come. We have a lot of pent-up demand here now that we have all these apartments and we're building senior apartments. They don't really have a place to go. In downtown, uh, we've done a great job with it, we have a lot of um nonprofit uses here and nonprofits close at five o'clock and it doesn't lend itself to things being open after five and creating nightlife. And the the thought has come up, uh, based upon not receiving as much money as we thought we were going to because we've applied for an E P A grant as well, we thought we're gonna have about eighteen million dollars to redo the the packing house over here. We don't, we have eleven million dollars. There's also the thought that, you know, it's a resiliency center. So if we fill this up with a bunch of food hall stuff or exhibition kitchens and we actually have something happen, where are we gonna put everybody? We've used up a lot of space with other uses and there's some nonprofits here as well.
How much do nonprofits pay, one dollar?
So the thought is, and I've been around for a long time here and I know that the council's tossed this around, of what ultimately are we going to do with City Hall? This is our last big open space in downtown that, you know, can kind of be a clean slate. And this individual that has taken spaces in Riverside and now, um, they actually own the the um the packing house in Redlands. Um, they've done some amazing work, but they've they've created a P three with um Riverside and they redid the packing house there where they were able to um pay a lease, the land was dedicated to them, they have a an operating covenant and I I would like to explore with Jerry this, this idea of reusing downtown here where, you know, he either takes what's here and and repurposes it, or maybe he starts new and uses the parking lot as well. We we've kind of we we lost commercial space, we did a great job with the senior center and with the the library annex and the library itself. You know, I was here during all of that and it's a wonderful use of space, but we also took up uh kind of a footprint where we could create those things here. And the only space that we really have left that we control is right here. And so part of, I think, when we talk about economic development, we also need to focus on what's going on in downtown as well because uh our asset is lingering a little bit here and 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 languishing. And I think we need to figure out a best and and most useful purpose for it so that it can create, you know, the the idea was always to have something going on within the park too and and something like this food hall concept that this Jerry came up with was amazing because they have stuff that happens on the weekends, he he ties it into other spaces. Um, if if anybody, actually, uh, me and Selena, Maritza, Gabe and Andrew went today and and saw this space and it's pretty amazing what he's done. Um, if you go there, your mind just starts racing as to what the opportunities are here. And yes, at some point, the zona central will happen and there will be a rail station and but we're talking about fifteen, maybe twenty years down the road. And the the C R C is great for what it is, but I don't know that it's going to lend to actually happening, having things happen here in the downtown area. Um, the the mayor is right, the 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 people wanna go have fun. The the pandemic happened, people wanna get out, they wanna have a drink, they want some entertainment, they want, you know, ambiance, you know? When we hit the lights up here. You saw that the, there is a space here, there's a beautiful space here in downtown. We have this big building sitting here that's closed after five o'clock. Some space that we can really develop into. I I would like to have, you know, as part of our strategic plan for economic development, I think we need to talk about down here too. Because yes, it's not gonna generate a lot of money, but we need to bring people in so they can experience what Coachella really is. Because, you know, during the the spring and and the fall, it's wonderful here. It's a little hot, but um, but we have a great opportunity to do some stuff here, but and then we take our nonprofits that are here and put them with the other nonprofits so that it becomes a nonprofit hub that's also for resiliency and so, uh, we we had a great meeting today, I'm sorry, I'm kind of excited about it.
You know what, in the the downtown for this chamber, it's a discussion. We've had many discussions about what we wanna do with this. I'm open and I said it before about moving the chamber out to where we have where the planning commission, is the planning commission still having their meetings there?
I don't.
They're having it here. Um, but then, and I know that um, Selena, you've made a lot of efforts when you're um going for the grant applications and to work around this area because you knew that you couldn't use it. And it's always been a benefit and we're going after, we went after those grants to be able to use this space. Um, and I think there was a study done years back as well for the wellness hub, right? And then, you know, there was a lot of great planning there too. And that's another study that we can use and incorporate as well with all the other studies when we're putting up together an economic development strategy plan. But I remember that was, that was one of the um uh, opportunities was that wellness hub, but then we couldn't find other locations that were large enough to um be able to adopt everything that was was identified in the wellness hub because it took up so much space. For the C R C, I, when I, when I, when we did the um groundbreaking or the um, yeah, the groundbreaking. Uh, it was, it wasn't easy for me to find the place, it wasn't. You know, there's this one entrance you go in and you have to go all the way down and then it doesn't connect to anything else, you know, it's it's dead end, so you gotta come back. So you're, I think you're absolutely right, Bill, with with that is I don't know how much it's gonna promote. It's not easy to find or to locate, at least it wasn't for me. Um, but it makes sense to move nonprofits in that location and then be able to use this space uh for some of that economic development growth that we need um and paying off some of those debts that the mayor is talking about. But there's a lot of studies that we have um that we've been able to um, implement or and we still need to see what came back out of those studies.
Selena, just a couple of things, um, talking about downtown and our downtown area. Um, do we know when we're going to send out an R F P for uh what was formerly known as the roaster? And then La Calaca?
Yeah, excuse me, in May, when their lease expires, I believe, uh, Bill and Maritza issued a um.
So it expires May twenty twenty-five?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Um, I I would just like to suggest that we could do our very best to advertise that as much as possible and maybe utilize things that we haven't in the past. Um, just as long as we can, so we can just attract really good applicants, not that we didn't get good applicants for that. But, you know, it's it's sitting there right now and I really wanna make sure that those buildings that we have control over and that we have are not just sitting around and waiting. Um, and then the other thing, uh, that the pueblo viejo um apartments, they have that little space C O D. Are they utilizing that still? Are they there? Do we know if they're open? How often are they providing services? So which?
I was told that they're not there anymore, uh, but they, uh, I guess they continue paying the lease.
Okay.
So, because that's what Chelsea Investment Corporation told me that
Okay.
they continue paying the lease, but they're not offering courses right now.
So are we able to look into that and see how we can take how we can utilize that space or perhaps help getting that space so that's not vacant? Um, it's, it's pretty great, it's very center, I guess, and people would walk around and, you know, if it's if they're not utilizing it, I don't see why, it's just there. Um, I do see that they have like their signage around, but I've never seen it open, so I was just curious as to could we have a business in there, a small business go in there or, you know, what are they looking for too? So that it's not vacant. Um, and then the other thing too, when you talked about the Chukwala National Monument and the linkage and how we can work around that, um I'm thinking the Just Move Coachella uh kind of popped in my head. And I was telling the our city manager about this the other day is on the weekends, especially on on Sundays, whenever they have the run. Uh, a lot of folks or a good amount of folks gather and they stay in this area, but yeah, after a certain time, they're just, they're kind of gone. Um, but I was just thinking that another thing that we could do when it comes to this monument is work together with that organization. I don't know if they're a nonprofit yet or or what their standing is, but um, and perhaps, you know, have people here gather, go and do a tour, hiking, whatever that may be. Um, and utilize that national monument in that way. Um, and then the other thing, and this is something I've talked about during our economic developments of committee meetings and it's about potentially having a farmer's market and how feasible that would be. I'm thinking partnering with growing Coachella Valley with the growers that are here locally, um, our local florist. Uh, whatever it can be so that we can bring people out here to the downtown area. Um, talking to, you know, local vendors, maybe people that don't have a brick and mortar and are, you know, still providing food and and, you know, not in that way, but perhaps whatever they're they're doing to to keep their business growing. Um, and so that we can bring people out here into this area. So just kind of a thought, I don't know where we're at with that, or if you looked into it more, but.
I I I can always provide a presentation to the council. I I I can always provide a presentation to the council.
Okay.
You know, um, yeah, you know, because I I did look into it, I just Didn't receive the go ahead to bring it back or, you know, but we have the research and All the information, I've talked to so many people, but I can definitely bring that back if that's what council would like.
Okay, yeah, I think it would be a great opportunity to have, you know, our our growers, um, have You know, be able to set up and food vendors, whoever wants to be out here, because after a certain time You can tell that the, just the coffee shop alone brings in a good crowd. And we have to be able to capture that, and then once we, once small businesses or the Food vendors, local food vendors, once they start seeing that, maybe they'll have that opportunity, they're, they'll want to have a brick and mortar at some point. Um, but I think allowing that opportunity for small businesses is going to, it's it's going to make a huge impact, so Hopefully, we're able to bring that back and see how feasible that would be. And those are all my comments, and then in regards to the SWOT analysis, I think, um This is the first time that I see it, and I've been on council for two years now. So I I think it's, it's great to be able to use that and 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 do it, um And do the outreach and have the small business owners, you know, come out, uh, different organizations, nonprofits, the community, everyone. But I do believe that it has to be a document that perhaps we hold on to. This should not be the first time that I'm seeing the SWOT analysis that was done in twenty thirteen. It has to be something Um, that gets updated, something that is shown, uh, a document that even the planning commission has access to And they're, they're taking a look at it constantly, especially when all of these Developments are coming around and knocking on the door, they have to be able to have that document and know that it exists. So just kind of for for future, if we do go and move forward with the SWOT analysis, which I fully support, It has to be something that we take a look at constantly so that it it works as a blueprint for us too. And those are all my comments, thank you, Selena.
Mayor, do you want to, you want to come back?
You might confuse people if you're on that.
I, uh, study sessions are supposed to be kind of
Okay.
Circular and not sure why we did this setup, but it's all good. Um, I I think from a standpoint, a couple of things, just um You know, when we're talking about the arts and culture and utilizing arts and culture and And, you know, cities don't do a good job of Of doing arts and culture. We don't, that's not, that's not something that's part of our municipal code and something that, that is like Structurally, we're able to do. But what we have done in Coachella is, is we worked with Coachella Walls, we worked with Corturas, who by the way is like Being demonized as this agency of like doing something nefarious, it's really weird, but um You know, if you look at, say, what Corturas did, and they built the largest mural In California. And then the other thing they did is they established a sense of identity when it comes to Coachella's Unique identity, which is very intimately tied to the Chicano experience in the United States. So what you see in Coachella is you see lowriders, you see lowrider bikes, you see Or like, like the clothing, the food, the connection. And I always think back of like, you know what's so cool that, that in Coachella, you have like Vario Logan. You know what I mean? You have like Islos, you have Coachella. You have, uh, what's the place up there in in Ri- in San Bernardino County that does the debt, the The, uh, they have, they're known for doing a big swap meet. And they, like, it's, you see it on TikTok, they got a lot of like, 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 uh, Gabe helped me out with it, does on TikTok, it's uh It's Santa Fe, Santa Fe, like that Santa Fe community, it's like, it's really robust. And then here's the kicker, here's the kicker. Japan. Japan now is is embracing the Chicano lowrider, and if you don't believe me, look it up, it's it's a, it's a thing, it's on Vice or it's on like, the Japanese culture is like wanting to do the Chicano culture. And so when you think about like, what really makes Art happen, and I've been to Austin, I've been to, you know, New Orleans. What's, what's part of the New Orleans culture? The Creole culture, the food, the, the The, you know, the trumpet, the, the huge African American Population that's, that's mixed with French, right? That, that's uh That's uh, that's mixed with different Spanish and, and uh, and they even have like a little bit of voodoo, right? Right? Like that's, like, like that Creole culture, like, I don't know if you've ever been on the witch tour and you go down to New Orleans and you can actually go and Like, they have like these seance experiences or you can go like on witch tours there. But it's part of, it's part of the cultural identity of the community. If you go to Austin. You go to Austin, I don't know if you've been in Austin, you've been in Austin, remember? Austin, what do they have? They got?
They got, you can walk from one side to the downtown and there's culture and
Music?
Food, music.
South by Southwest, they have nonprofits, they have businesses. The nonprofits, you should see how the city has invested in their nonprofits, and they have residential Living lounges or living spaces where if you're a traveling artist and you want to live in that city, You can actually rent a Room for a dollar, two dollars, three dollars, five dollars, right? And and now You have a stay, you're there, you're, you're, you, you can stay there for a week. They also have created a, a, a minimum tax. Where, for example, if you're a, if you're a traveling artist or a traveling musician, You, you, you set a minimum standard of saying, hey, you, um You know, you want to rent them, you know, you got a little, little uh, country band, you know, here's the minimum standard, right? But the, but the city has worked with its nonprofits to, to create and establish these Standards that they use the arts and culture, not by demeaning them, but by embracing them and integrating them within Art, nonprofit, politics, you know, culture, food. I don't know how many times I've been to a barbecue with some of our lowriders. Those guys don't cook, they've got really good barbecue, they got really good chicken, they got really good condensate, they got really good rice and beans. And so if we think we're gonna Suggest a methodology, like that we're gonna get here. That you can't do it without people that actually compose your community and and are actually working to try to Create something, doesn't make sense, doesn't make sense either. So, so part of our strategy is to embrace the arts and culture, then, but how? If we don't embrace the nonprofits. I, I don't, or, or art, we try, we have an art commission that are comprised of, of, of different folks. Some of them are teachers, some of them are nonprofits, some of them are just people that like art. And so how do we get that strategy going? Uh, Selena, what do you think?
I think that we had though, um, when we implemented or we did the um, Arts and Culture Commission, I think we had given at that time, um, some direction or allow the commissioners To really put together a plan of what they would like to see in the following years and identify areas That they want to do art or murals or sculptures, um, and that's something that they can start there.
Yeah, they have, they.
What, what are they doing?
Well, they're gonna, uh, one suggestion they made is to, um, you know, paint the utility boxes and have like some of the youth, um, involved. And even
They're gonna organize the youth.
Yeah, they're, they're, they're gonna organize, they're in the process of doing that, um, and also, um They had suggested like window painting during the holidays, you know how you see the cute window painting uh, as a way to, you know, and even, um What, if we have another mural, um, you know, to assist the artists with, um, learning like the process of how to, how to, um Plan for a large scale mural and, you know, so the, this artist that we're gonna have, um, she's gonna Conduct a workshop, um, because she did it for the Obama Foundation and, um, and kind of like incorporate Like those elements on how to teach students to even like price their art and how to paint large scale and collaborate.
So Bill, you're saying that the city wants to make the art, like you want to have staff organize and go after Volunteers with the commission, you wanna, um, you want to lead all that Like through this commission and your economic development team's gonna do that?
That's not what I, no, we have city business to attend to and Ultimately, commissions and nonprofits should be leading those charges, in my mind.
So you think it is a good idea to work with nonprofits and facilitate arts and culture, music, food? All of them.
I think the, the, the strategy here though, and it's really important to identify when you're talking about Long-term goals or immediate goals is that we really need to identify And where do we want to put our resources all right now, because it takes a lot of work, so we're giving them direction, like to do The, the ruta de la ti, you know, the, um, the farm, uh, market, farming market. And then we're saying, okay, you know, do this art program, and it's all, it's all wonderful, it's all things that we need, but It's identifying where can we put the resources that we need. And that's, I think, you know, important to evaluate and and discuss, and it's, it's, if we're gonna do all these things that At one time is how much do we want to dedicate to each area, but There's a lot here, I mean, what Selena has brought forward is a lot to dive into. And I think it's important that we strategize and identify is where our resources are needed the most And how much we can contribute, and I'm not downplaying the art and culture, it's not what I'm saying at all, but rather is We got to put a plan together because we're asking a lot of you guys, there's all these different things that we're pulling you to. And I think part of the strategic plan was to identify and to support you guys in the path that we're giving you. Because in my opinion, it doesn't, we can't keep pulling you guys in every direction without really giving you A plan, because, you know, for example, so right now you've been given a lot of direction. And then I'd say, you know, in two weeks, we say, hey, you know, you got to put this, we want to see you put this together. And it's hard to just start and finish all the stuff that were put aside, all the projects and plans that you're working on now And then start something else. And so all I'm saying is that we really need to put a plan in place So that we're supporting staff and we're identifying the needs here in the city, but It's how much resources do we want to put on so many different things and and how many?
Point noted, and just, uh, just in terms of resources, uh, Bill, don't we have an arts and public places fee?
Yes.
Yeah, what do we have, about three, four hundred thousand dollars, that's probably fine, right? What do you think?
Yes, it's actually, um, three hundred, about three hundred thousand.
Three hundred thousand, right, and that's used to do art and things like that, so. My, my point is not that, that, I, I, by the way, I, I think staff, you guys do a great job of Of, uh, of breathing, you know, walking, you know, uh, making sure your heart beats, you know, everything, and you do, and then handling Everything with all the classes. But I'm a big believer that, that government, when you truly work Intersectorally, meaning with your nonprofits and businesses, you can actually do a lot more to bring a lot more to your community. And so I'm not a believer that things that government should do at all, and by any means limit you Because you don't have the time, I, I, I differ from the councilwoman's opinion. I look at it from a standpoint of, of build partnerships and embrace the nonprofits. And, and, and work with them. And just like we've done Coachella Walls and we've done, uh, the biggest mural and we're gonna be like Raices. You know, as another organization that's out there. And, and there was this one, uh, oh, Golden Voice, for example. The Golden Voice wants to work with us to do another sculpture, another, another deal in downtown. That's a good interest in tomorrow collaboration, where we bring arts and we use some of our resources to enhance our city. I don't think the city should be the one that's responsible for making these things happen, I really don't, I, I think that we have to work With businesses, we have to work with nonprofits, we have to work with creative folks, private sector individuals, the curie. I've seen someone like Coachella, like, like, the Coachella administrators artwork or suggestions. There's a mirror right there, I'm like, hmm, you know what I mean? But it came from staff and, you know, the person's no longer here. And, uh, it came, and I was like, okay, that could have been done in a different way. And that, and that fund is, is not just used for the sole benefit of the city, but it's used to cultivate partnerships. And that's been our strength in Coachella, like, our strength in Coachella has been the fact that We got twenty-two million dollars From the state of California and the Fed, had it not been for those, probably going to give us more, because our passive was inclusive. Our process was iterative, our process was bottom up, not, you know, down or up down. I said, it's top down, top down. So, so, so like that works. And if we think we're gonna do it all, huh? I think it's our partnerships that have cultivated a cool vibe in the city, that a lot of communities are empty of it. Now, there's an effort to try to demonize and and just like break it up because they get involved themselves in civics, but who cares? Part of what happens in any community, people involve themselves in civic life all the time, politics all the time. And I think for us, it's, it's, it's important that we continue to facilitate that. It's a strength, not a weakness. In fact, I would put that when you do your SWAT movies are nonprofit relationships, a huge thing. And they should, they should be continued to be cultivated and, and fully moved out, you realize, I really do believe that.
Um, for the three, four hundred dollars that we have in the arts and public places, I think we use some of that funding too Outside of just art, I think we did it on the, um, in the, um, Transit Hub. Did we use some of that money out there? We did.
Yes.
Was it for the shades?
Oh, was it for? Yeah, I, Andrew can speak to that, um, because I know he had to cover some expenses, so, um, but I know We even had thought that maybe we would use some of that money for, you know, in, on the corner, I think it's fourth or fifth, fourth. And, um, there's a big round circle that is just sitting there open And it was meant for art, like an art installation to be installed there.
So you put some pre-infrastructure in your wireline?
Yeah.
So that's what you use, what just, what just for, right? I mean, that's what Ethereal did, we put some, uh, light Water, right? But that's, that's, that's completely within the confines of what that dollar could be used, and I thought we were working with Golden Voice to try to bring a piece. In fact, Golden Voice had just reached out to me that they want to do a story on how We've taken pieces of Coachella art and integrated them into Coachella, Ethereal being an example, uh Shady Lango, what are we calling the dog?
The bear.
The bear.
It's a bear.
Also, also from Coachella, that's also from Coachella, like, that's a cool little piece, right? You had Armando Lerma, that was with the Day Farmers, he had a sneaking into the show that was here on Avenue On Great Food World, that's such a cool piece, like that needs a home. And then, and then guess what? The greatest, the sincerest form of flattery is, is invitation. And he'll start and say, well, we want that art too, you know, we want it now too, and so, so Golden Voice has been paying attention to it, but we started it first. Right? And I think, I think like, those relationships are cool. Those relationships bring visitors to Coachella, and I still think, for example, Nobody wants to go to Indio and take a photo, a, a, a photo in front of Indio, with all due respect to them. I think what somebody wants to do is take the finish of a picture in front of Coachella, just like Beyonce did when she came, and she took A cool photo in front of the Coachella city limits. So in terms of how we're thinking about arts and programming, like, nonprofits, it's, it's business, it's, it's a collective. Art's not supposed to be like, like a straight line, it's this, it's everything, and so.
Well, it's not, it's not down for the other cities, but, um, well, to the mayor's point then, um, the commission can start Framing something of where, of where that can be used and the criteria that can be used. And I remember how that came about, that was because we didn't have enough funding to complete everything out there. And then that's when we thought of, well, let's use the arts in public places so that we can help fill in That corner, and that's how that came about, it's just being clever that way, but, you know, we have a commission. You know, that's what they do, they do a good job.
From Golden Voice?
Um, yeah, because I, I know that was, uh, something our former city manager was working on, and so Uh, Ralphie was supposed to send us, um, some information about, uh, but then I didn't hear back from Ralphie anymore, um. I think he got busy, uh.
So Ralphie's texting me, so, I'll, even, we'll just do it, but then it's I'm gonna stop things just for one minute, just to go to him. And that'll be a little, a little piece of art, you know, and it meets the objectives of the, where we did it in the first place.
Lee, do you have enough direction? By the RFP, when would you be putting that out?
Uh for the SWAT analysis, uh you know, I think uh. Could we put it out real soon? I mean, I think we can. I we have paperwork, I mean, already researched.
We need to dovetail them into a strategic plan citywide to independent run together. Because one will build off of the other and maybe we need to talk about an art strategy too. And missing, maybe we need to just ask you my, what I was thinking. Where are we going with the arts? What is our strategy with the arts? Where are we gonna use the art fund for? Do we wanna continue to buy pieces from? The Coachella Fest? Do we want to build the nonprofits? Do we want to, you know, where are where? Where's our priorities? We we get away from what we're supposed to have a pyramid hierarchy of needs, right? And you're right, the cities do. Instituents, council, staff. And then everything else that falls underneath it. We get direction from the people who elected you. And then we get it from you. We need to focus on that and. I don't know that we necessarily have that focus right now because it's been a while since your plan was put together.
Sure, I mean, that that's fair, that's fair, but I think at the same time, you got the major budget from what, did you already deal? So we may got the major budget, maybe we can look at allocating thirty two K for. What a deal is. And then the other a point that you made made right here. And I know this is something council member that brought up before is, you know, small business assistance, like. What are we gonna do for our small businesses? So I think you have SBA opportunities. So like, what are the list of partners on, well. I shouldn't say that anymore now.
No, we have, we have partnerships with Riverside County Economic Development Agency and the SBDC. We have grant funding. Um assigned to them through the CRC for the Small Business Incubation Entrepreneurship. Um and we also have funding through TCC for the Displacement Avoidance Plan and all this good stuff. And so. So there is fun funding available to again.
What about like allocating a little bit of money and just say, you know, Dr. Faye wants to uh open a fig shop. You know, and then and just type it up, you know, most of. Why? Because at Shading Ling.
Doctor Faye.
And and do we have a a small business assistance program? If somebody, for example, like in Coachella. And and this is how much I like cruising and talking to people. I know about seventy five people who play the accordion. They have corners, they have a a I think they're called Garibaldi or. And and these kids are amazing. Well, there's probably a need to actually do like. Accordion repair and music instrument repair. Could we help somebody out do that, right? Just like we incubated. Uh the coffee shop. Right? Like, I met Steve, uh he was, I met him at lunch at the Greenleaf and and he was building a. A cheese pizza or something like that, I forget what it was. But we were able to incubate with the with the building, but it can we incubate somebody? That has an idea and it's worth exploring and we can give you a couple of thousand dollars to figure out how to put in your plan, how to get financing. Is that something that we wanna do?
But you know what? The 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 bigger conversation to that is that when when a lot of these businesses were coming for it and we had a a committee. And there was people from the bank there, there was people, you know, from the SPD, SB.
SBDC.
Um and there was a lot of stuff that was identified and and many of those things was the permit processes. And so. Before even giving them a few thousand dollars is that an SBDC puts a lot of these trainings. Um and they do very well at it is, you know, the application process. Do they need a city business? Do they need a county business? But there's a lot of, there's a big educational portion that's needed. And that's for a lot of our businesses that are operating from home is that. They just don't know, you know, what they need. Um and then they feel like they're not gonna get to support if they go outside the home. As well. So there's lots of things that we we need to identify as well as like um Mechanics Bank, there was a representative there. That was just discussing having a commerce, having a business account. You know, a lot of businesses don't have those business accounts and there's advantages there. There was a lot of stuff that. That support that small businesses really need. But um I think a a big part of that is the educational portion.
So education, that's a big factor, access to loans, right? Some of the factors, like capital. So the the what you do have in Coachella. You got a lot of amazing people in their house. I I know a gal who built her business and that was a big ranch. And she makes quinceañera dresses and parties. And I know a city that's in LA County that that it's become like. Like the city where all the kids go and get their quinceañera dresses. And it's like. And it's like this big thing. Well, Coachella could do that too, if we support that. There's people that, you know, like. Like somebody that I know too, that there are, there are, they like to ball out, they like they they like to shine shoes. You know, and and you have like the horses that are million dollar ponies. You have, you like, there's no cobbler over here in this area. And by the way, the closest cobbler shop that like is in Palm Desert. Where all of these folks that like do cobblering. They should be right here. Why? Because the the jumping horses and the Latino, you know, sombrero, norteño, you know.
Yeah.
Meccano, we like wearing boots. You gotta see my new boots. They're like, you know, like, like, you you put us on, but we facilitate a cobbler game? And create a small business opportunity where. We can gather, we can gather.
Am I hearing that we want like a small business loan program or are we thinking like?
So and. But also with regulatory assistance.
I think that should be part of the strategic plan. This is what I'm talking about that we need a structure, we need a plan. We can't just keep saying, oh, we can. But I I don't like that this organization is, okay, let's do this, let's do that.
Focus.
Yes, a plan that gives us.
Our 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 pyramids doing this.
So what else? So Selena and Bill, what do you need from us right now? What else? What other directive do you need from us that we can move forward?
Planning, like set up strategic planning.
What's your session?
Just economic development.
Strategic plan, right?
Right.
Okay, so we're throwing out.
Take everything you've told us and try to focus it. And so at this point, we need a facilitator, we need to get strategic planning.
And that's not what we have right now.
But you're looking at it from a standpoint of the organization as a whole.
Yes, yes, we also need to focus too, because like you said, we've got a lot of staff that are focused in other areas. And it's getting away from what we need to be doing, focusing on electric and chrome six and instead we're doing other things. And we need to coordinate our efforts.
But we do have a economic development department. She has one, two, three employees, right?
Most of them are new.
Well, yeah, but there is.
Then, and and so this is great information for them. And I'm no economic development director, I have lots of ideas, but we need to focus them so that we can also be successful. Because if we're throwing fifty things up there, how many things are actually gonna stick? There's a lot of things that we've thrown, we've darted at, but. How many things are actually getting accomplished? We need to focus on the most important things because if we get the electric and the out of the way, we get the water out of the way. We start working on housing, it's gonna allow us to do those other things that, you know, hierarchies. If we can't accomplish this stuff up here, we're not gonna get to down here because we don't have the resources.
Gotcha. So the next meeting that we have, it should be to discuss. Uh or to put together actually in paper. I think it would be good to have a facilitator, but also a good opportunity for the council to actually be able to get out of their seat. And write things down and and share. And discuss and stay in one section and talk about infrastructure and go to the other section and talk about something different. So that's what a strategic planning session should look like so that we can put together a document that we can be looking at.
I I would just say, you know, next door, next door, I wanna say Indio. They got an economic development department and it's like four people too. And. They got crepes over there now, they got music center, they got like this sushi DJ thing that's going on, it's kinda cool. They have uh all like, like Chick Fillets, like they have uh um, you know. Buildings that are going on, like the economic development, like this is your lane. At least in my opinion, you know, the city manager's saying, well, it kind of interferes or goes with. Other things, I I get it, you're you're right. I mean, they're structured, right? And I think, well, maybe what you're looking at is from dollars.
Timing, like I talked about, Temecula didn't have to do anything, people just walked in right now because of the population in India. People are just walking in and also the corridor along the ten, it's ripe for development. They have open spots.
Their downtown has been there and they're revitalizing, now we need to go back.
I know, but they also. But they also did not though use it for all civic, you know, it's a bigger downtown area. Downtown is very small, unfortunately. You know, when it was placed in, there was a lot of residential. Up that door over there, but there's lots of space for commercial. We look at our footprint here now. These aisles, very tight. That's why I was talking about the use of this space. We need to get something here. And then maybe, you know, when Louis was here, we talked about kind of commercial around Veterans Park. We turn this down or do something with it and then, hey, across the street just did this and they wiped out a couple of houses and we look at it, it started to spread around the park. And now we can close down streets and we have lights and we can create this whole, and maybe we blow it from the inside out.
Yeah.
You know, cause we're gonna create value. Somebody wanna sell their house and they wanna move to another area. Do it backwards because it's been here forever, but it's what we got. And I that's the only way to possibly redevelop this area is to. Grow from inside out.
I've been.
Biggest spot of open land here that the city controlled is right under our feet.
I've been to downtowns and other parts of the country and where there's a square, right? But everything around it is. Is busy, right? But there is no city hall in that in that downtown square, right? It's it's all commercial. There's one, two, three, four um bars, there's like a uh. Third version of El Trebol, but it's like a Irish bar. Um and you have other places and you have food, right? And a coffee shop. And so, you know, then the and then you also have boutique storage, right? And how do you really do that? And I can see that um. Trying to do that down here and how do you utilize this space um? And then it keeps the, you know, going back to the earlier comments, it keeps people here the whole night, right? And they spend their dollars down here instead of. You create like a, I've been on a spooky train um walk, I've been on a cemetery walk. And you know, how do you look at that? And it's how what's that component? You go down here and you do the, and I don't know, some. Like old miner tour walk with Mr.
Or Native American.
Native American or something, right? So.
That's where Gabe talks about those stories, right? Like you have to fill in with those stories. There's a cool story that. That I keep hearing, I've heard it a lot from a lot of old timers where. Mister Augustine, one of the members of Mister Augustine, he would disappear. Where for like months out of time, then he would come back with a little gold hat, a little gold bag. It was like gold, little gold, and he would go on and said, but didn't ever told anybody. You know what I mean? Cause you know, Mister Augustine, you're old time, and people know that story to be true. You know, and there's 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 a story about like these these eucalyptus trees and why they line up this whole quarter, like. That's probably, you realize that, you know, you have a eucalyptus tree right in your place, you call. The other one now has has an actual design of apples on it and the other one's behind it. On the other side, but apparently those were planted too, I don't know. So those are like the stories that need to be curated long term, right? And it's kinda cool, like like identity. But but I think I think you're right in terms of. Focusing, you know? But, you know, I mean, it's also good to throw out these ideas.
Yeah.
Oh, no, no, because it keeps our minds active. We have to constantly be thinking ahead. When we met with this Jerry guy today, I said, I walked in here and I saw stuff and I started explaining city all to him because I thought he'd been here before. And I said, I'm gonna paint a picture to you and we connected that way because he says, yeah, when I first walked into this packing house, I'm like, man, I can do this and I can do this. And I can do this. And it was awesome talking to him because he's a man with vision. Oh, we were also talking about, you know, the farmer's market and things like that. He's working with the growers that are still in a couple of active farms and redlands and he actually is bringing the farmers down to sell their stuff in his. Place as well. So he he it was almost like we were speaking in the same language. It was kinda funny having this conversation and it's like. I thought David called and saying, hey, we've talked about this stuff and you bring this up because they were kind of on the same page. It's. Pretty cool, good trip to know.
You know, that that packing house that we did in downtown Riverside now becomes a staple in how the university recruits graduate students. It's like. Cause I just, you know, my daytime job, they like, oh, we wanna take the students there and that's what sells them to come down to where we study at UC Riverside. Because it's. Because it's it it creates a nightlife, right? And we go back to that, that Mr. Mayor is saying like the component, right?
There there's there's three things that we need to remember in Coachella. Number one, we have. Some of the highest homeownership rates in Coachella. Meaning that our residents are here, here, like they're not second homes, like seventy eight percent or something like that are Coachella residents. Number two, we have probably one of the largest small business communities here that are pretty busy. And number three, we have a very, very young. And and those are like really, really good. When I was going to UCR, Mayor Lovridge and he was probably a professor. Uh he he would always. Try to figure out how he can keep his youth in downtown Riverside in that university quarter. And he hired, in fact, Manny Martinez was part of his intern, others were in the. He offered me one, but I took the paid one and that's it. But when you have a young critical mass. That's a new match. And so what do people that are young wanna do? They stay up late, you know, they wanna party, they wanna um. Wanna talk to their friends, right? They wanna find romance at that age too. You know what I mean? And 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 it's the truth, it's the truth. Like, what do young people do? Sometimes some of them get a little aggressive, right? They'll start a little rattling, you know what I mean? But it's like, how do we cultivate? And and play to our advantage of being in one town. And it's also a, it's a town that's very. It's it's very, it's very town.
Bless you.
Very local. It's very local, you know, and so I I think those are strengths, I don't think those are weaknesses. But I think that identity, right? You create that identity, the Chicano identity, the the Mexican-American identity. The immigrant identity, the LGBT identity, that that identity that's like, that's like. Um you know, I got two daughters, farm women, you know, they're 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 twins, you know, and so like. Identity is here too. You know, we do have them, the cheese buttering is here too, you know, but it's like, it's like, it's all that comes into play. On how we work to bring bring a sense of place, because I think you have no identity, you have no sense of place.
So we're gonna come back and we're gonna do a strategic plan. And I I'm hoping that we'll be able to um bring back the the. The gentleman who did our strategic plan three years back. I know Megan and I had asked for that, when was that done? Like in two thousand twenty one? Two thousand twenty two. And so we have that document and that plan in place. And then so when we do a strategic plan now, we can also see where we're at and how much of that did we actually accomplish or. And that's exactly what it's done for us to give us direction in that framework to work within. But I think that, you know, that he should be reached out to since that's who we um contracted during that time. I don't know, I don't remember who he was.
We'll preach out to that and make sure that they propose.
Yeah.
But again, we're gonna have to dust that off because I don't know what happened with that. I wasn't here at the time.
Yeah.
Heard about it, but um you know, it'll be a good thing to take a look at what we wanted versus where we're at now. It may change and stay the same because it's not as old as it was, but then we need to find out what we were doing and.
Yeah, we didn't, we didn't follow it, but that's the purpose of it. And and we, you know, we paid quite a bit to have the uh the gentleman. To do the strategic plan to facilitate it all.
Do we have a game plan? Are we good?
Thank you. A great conversation. I hope that um. You helped us and hopefully we helped you some. And I would love to um have. If if the council wants to go to, you know, Redlands or Riverside. If the council wants to go to, you know, Redlands or River Side, see the stuff, if you haven't seen it.
I I do have um one um. Uh, request and we haven't done this yet and, you know, I know, Bill, I know, I don't, I don't know what type of. Culture you're trying to build here, but in the past, like, the staff was very involved in a lot of different ideas and so. I'd like to hear from other staff members, you have any ideas on what we're throwing out there? They're all quiet and just on their cell phones or ideas or just open enough to everybody here. There was a city manager candidate years ago that said, you know what Coachella should do? They should just embrace itself and help itself. And use that as an economic development strategy, you're ninety eight percent Latino, they're trying to be anything else.
Selena, squad analysis, can you um add it to our website?
Yes, uh, the current one, the.
No, yeah, the one that's exist, yeah.
Any other takers?
I'm usually not here, Sean, I think that's true. I like a lot of what you said about him for saying um offense in arts. And I think as far as the CIP goes, um, depending how all of the con artists in arts can be. Um, maybe position at CRC, so we have a well-known opportunity right here in downtown. Taking the CIP projects and intentionally. Um, looking forward to CIPs and designing CIPs so that they support that um nonprofit structures, support that art structure. Maybe that's what's sort of more appropriate. And then that brings up economic development downtown. So intentionally utilizing our hands.
To rethink and reimagine.
Yes, intentionally encourage the.
So there was a a comments of mayors of like fifteen mayors at one time walked to downtown. And one of the biggest things are critics were saying, hey, you you have a, you only have like an eight to four downtown, I'm like, what do you mean by that? People get ready, they leave by four. And if you ever wanna create something more robust, you need to get rid of the, of the uh. The bill, the water bill, but the fires, but the fire station. He says, not only is it eight to four, but it's also Monday to Thursday. And then now you have that facility there, there's maybe four or five times a week, and they're like eight to eight. So that's so I'm hearing from you, Bill, is that if you wanna get movement, like be intentional and put the non-malts over there.
Andrew came up with most of the stuff, he shows the idea with me, that's why they had me gonna not put red ones.
So one of the things, one of the things that we could probably do on that idea in terms of funding. We could should go knock on on the answer's door and pull up the Californian ballot and ask the Californian ballot to chip in on the resiliency center. Because now you wanna create a.
Gabe's already worked on the Californian ballot.
Alright. So you guys are already good.
We're we're.
So you guys are all talking.
And and you're right, you know, I I I heard myself called a little rigid once, not too long ago. I embraced, you know, it's a different way of looking at things. I got older, yeah, a little bit older and.
A little more flexible.
So, I don't know about flexible, I have terrible touch on my toes. Anyhow, yes, um, I don't wanna stifle that and, you know, I I've had more interaction with the the core group of the executives. You know, in the last month, and I did, well, the pandemic didn't help towards the end of my last reign.
So you're saying they're alright?
No, they're great. So, um, you know, uh, it it was good going out with them today and talking about the what ifs and.
Did you guys take a beer?
No.
It's okay.
Great comments, Andrew, thank you. Anyone else?
To the extent that we have some dollars available for expanding the system. And be intentional, when you wanna put money dollars to extend the order to the room, that's where you put it, right, so. You wanna put it down this corridor or some other corridor, that's that's up to the council to decide. Or you wanna make those investments for the purposes of activating, activating development.
But infrastructure is the greatest economic incentive.
Yep.
You can actually do.
Great comments, you guys.
Renta?
And those are really good strengths, that will allow us to grow.
That would stay here, right? That's where all the grants are, you can't just, that doesn't need the government, it's gotta be. All the sectors are gonna be getting grants, that's what this is, Hyman, Caesar?
I'm talking about, actually, um. From you, when I heard about the meeting with Jerry and. Raise the packing house and shifting priorities maybe, uh, you know. But nonprofits or CRC and doing some commercial development here. And then think about, um, I don't know anybody's ever been to Portland and visited any of the McMenamins bars or uh. A chain bar, so they refurbished like an old elementary school, actually, you know. They still the same building and structure, but they did like little mini bars inside, restaurants, hotel rooms, stuff like that. I don't know how many issues there are with the actual building here, I heard already scared in there, I don't know, it was always actually renovated or.
It's a jail, it's a jail. This is the courthouse right here.
Yeah, I mean, you know, it's just smart, I mean.
Courthouse, there's a jail, but where we have our conference room, where our, those sessions, a jail.
Yeah, but the structure, you know, if it's not uh, you know. To understand, like, there's a renovation has to be completed for that, I think there's still a lot of uh potential in this area, this. And a building actually included this building inside operate, so you start a year, you get a re-plan and then uh. Think this uh will be relatively new to the area, but obviously with any uh, you know, culture neighborhoods um. Like as good as I could be, right, I think we mentioned this and we brought it to the council uh. Previous meeting, uh, when we went to Santa Rosa and they had the both the parks, right?
That's right.
You know, I know we got the container park, but there, I just feel like there's a, and I know there's certain ordinances with the, you know, with vendors and stuff like that, but I think. It's in terms of uh gathering points, including and connecting, it's just adding something like that, because you've seen it, again, because going back to Portland, right? With the small uh Indian population, they have their, they have their American people, whatever they call it, brands, all sorts of different. Like I mentioned, we built the park in Santa Rosa and it's just a um. Like a standing, you know, it's not like a weekly game or whatever, it's like there every day, it's just a rotating. Uh, lining up uh street vendors that are, uh, in, she but, that are coming in and so uh, and but they also have like the. The the performance space, right, you're talking about the accordion players and stuff like that, I'm sure there's a lot of up and coming bands around here and just having that. Uh, yeah, that, that's what we need point where like we need to come together, eat music and all that, and I did. Visit uh E D O's um, we tried Fridays, right, so something like very similar to that. Well, not just on a weekly basis, maybe it could be like a stationary place where it's like every day.
Sees?
Well, I think I experienced this uh. That's when, you know, that third avenue went to the list and. So we heard a couple of, no, I was saying a couple of months ago, their their farmer's market was very small. And this, I think, it was, it was, you know, it was part of this very strong, you know. Uh, personally, all the way down to, probably say to the, where the bank was, but it was pretty cool. And, you know, they had a park, the Happy Theater, and I was just fishing, you know, it's like, ah, you know, uh, if, you know, we have a great. You know, partnership with nonprofits, right, with things like schools, they love to play, that's all, they just wanted to come and play on.
Yeah, be it, you can put all the drum line here for like reels.
No, they're missing, they're missing that little aspect, but they preach to the nonprofits, create, create the music for the people. Not just shopping, but enjoying the music scene now and enjoying the, you know, the the weather, like, like here, no question. You you mentioned the weather, you know, you know, these are certain periods of time to take advantage of. But, you know, what Bill said, you create that happiness here in downtown, uh, it'll be great.
Well, I just have a couple of comments, um. I know that beyond the district, um, as you mentioned about. You know, the same thing that happened with all, the community with all the money, but just something as small as, you know, like, I remember one time. Um, I forget, we got a call from an attorney that wanted the district to uh fund, you know, uh gymnastics program. With this child that had been abused. And so, I mean, we turned around and and said, well, hey, how about if you, you know, among your peers? You know, like a donation, you know, so that we can get to the district. And it was just really cool because, I mean, you just, they didn't even think about that. And so they reached out to the firm and they collected so much money that that it took, that it got, they got this little girl to uh. Start the gymnastics program for a full year and they paid for the whole year, but all they had to do was to turn that around and ask them for the money instead of. You know, a government agency, so just something as small as that and also because I hear um your staff how creative they are. Um, even just like with another program that the the district put together, you know, the basketball tournament that was with the Suns. And all they came out of was an idea from an employee, hey, how about if you do, you know, suns under the stars? And that was just the idea and from there, they they got so many people, they collaborated, you know, and uh they came up with the event and the district. Runs for, you know, to put to towards a foundation, that now the foundation had money to get to these kids to be able to afford. To participate in these programs. So I think, you know, it's really quoting there, you know, someone coming up with an idea and then from there collaborating with. You know, with other people and I think too, um, I think about the the McCam theater coming up with one, one, I am. A good program or idea that people will gather and, you know. Wanna participate, I mean, the the McCam theater has a lot of support from people with lots of money, same thing with the the um. The animal, what is the, where they have the the uh, the zoo.
Oh, living desert.
They put a lot of uh interest there because people are into that plane. So I think coming up with an idea for the city that, you know, other people with money will, you know, support it and uh want to be a part of that and will contribute to. To uh whatever is the city is.
Here, you've been quiet with her, responding.
Now, I was thinking about, but hasn't been said, um, I I forgot what Bill told us, there's a place that's been taught us about in Diego that we visited. Station. So I was thinking about what happened with the city high school. And that was like a refurbished, like a. They have like food, arts, uh, all kinds of things going on. So they read adapted that, so whatever happens with the high school, if it can move somewhere else, that could be a good opportunity, you know, for if you have a point on it, uh. It's an airport, out of that whole area of the polls, that, you know.
Exploring alternative uses of facilities plan for the old high school, if we ever get a new. Alright, well, thank you guys, I think this is pretty diverse.
Thank you, everyone, appreciate your time.